We're going to begin with a moment of silence. I think all of us agree that what happened to our neighbors in Connecticut was a disaster and a tragedy of epic proportions. There's no way we can process this information. We can't send enough money or cards or do benefit concerts or even build a memorial and justify what happened there. So I would ask that we all just take a moment, reflect a little bit, and then we'll engage in the business of the town. So today, is there any public discussion? Guess not. We're going to be starting with Steve Smith of Serpent in just a moment. We have some license renewals to deal with. We have some personnel actions to attend to. And that's actually the lion's share of the agenda today, I think. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and call you forward, Steve, to talk about the five-year update. You ready?
Let me hand this out, pass those down, explaining what I'm here. About five years ago, Serpent went through a process with the cities and towns in southeastern Mass, including Free Town, to, in connection with South Coast Rail, to designate areas, working with citizens in town, designate areas that would be considered priority areas for development, priority areas for protection. And we had a series of meetings in Free Town. Free Town was one of the more active communities we've worked with, got a lot of input from citizens and local officials, and published a map that showed areas that you felt were priority in those areas. This information then got filtered up to the state, and the state narrowed it down a little bit and published a state map of priority protection and priority development areas. Since that happened five years ago, a lot has changed. The governor, Patrick, in 2009, Jeanette, I believe, issued, 2010 issued Executive Order 525, which directed state agencies to consult and to follow these designations of priority development and priority protection areas when considering grants. Federal, state programs like the Mass Works program built it right into the program if they have to look at this information. So it became, it became a lot more important from the state's eyes than it was five years ago. In addition, things changed in the communities, attitudes changed, and maybe most significantly, our ability at Serpent and at the state to do GIS mapping, to map all the attributes that you would consider in designating these areas, whether they were natural resources or infrastructure or whatever, got a whole lot better. So we're embarking on a process to update these maps. And I am here to just inform you that we hope to be holding a public meeting in town sometime early in 2013. We'd like you to do a couple of things with us. Designate someone to help us, pick a date with the invitation list, make sure that people are involved, and we would host a workshop in which people will be invited. It could be on cable TV if you wanted, that would be fine. We would get information out in advance. Citizens could come, officials could come, look at the work you did five years ago, which was good. And we're not suggesting we want to change that significantly, but like you an opportunity to review it and say, are these the areas in Free Town that we think are most appropriate to develop down the road, and are these the areas that we think have the highest priority to be protected? So that's my purpose for being here, to let you know that we want to embark in this process, and just ask you to give me a name and we can work with in moving forward with this. I think that's pretty much all I have to say.
You're doing it in all 31 communities, or you have the 27, so.
Yes.
Yep.
Can you recommend that we give them Richard's name or Nick's?
I would agree.
I was going to volunteer.
Of course he was. That would make the most sense, you know, our internal person.
I assumed that would be the case, which I didn't want to presume anything.
When we did this last time, because I remember participating, we had invited planning committee, conservation, anyone who was involved in the environmental activist groups, but we also went out to just everybody. So I don't know if we want to do a press release. I don't know how you want to handle it.
Yeah, like how involved do you want this to be? Like I remember how involved it was before. Sorry, I'm losing my voice because I'm getting all nervous about this process done all over again, and are we going to reinvent the wheel or are we just going to cut?
No, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. There is a significant difference, I should have mentioned, that the conclusion of the process would like come back before you and say, we'd like you to sign off on what was done, what came out of this process. And so, but, but the work that was done last time was good. And we don't want to reinvent the wheel, but there is new information, there are new people at the table, so we want to give them the opportunity to do it.
I would advise city legislator, administrator, because he wasn't part of the process at that point, and just going over everything and the reasoning why we did the priority development in certain areas and why we did the priority protection in certain areas, just so we have a clearer understanding of what that was all about.
I'm going over it with me, too.
And probably, that's a good idea, because that was a pretty, first of all, it was fast and furious, but it was a good exercise. It allowed this community to really look at what mattered, where it made sense for this town to do that.
So I'll pull up the old maps and we can at least start with that.
Yeah, we'll add that stuff all, we can get it online and sort of ahead of time, so that will all be available.
Okay, great. All right, so use your point, ma'am.
All right.
Until Grant, I hope he feels better.
Oh, there you are.
Sorry about that. My son.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Take care.
Hope you feel better.
All right, last chance, you don't want to take anything out of order. All right, let's do the licenses then. We have two and three. Class two motor vehicle licenses, Chipaway Auto Sales, Clemens Auto Sales, PJ Auto Sales, Herb's Auto Body Repair and Sales, PJ's Tire, Bowler's Garage, F&amp;F Auto Sales, Evolution Auto Sales, Jimmy's Used Cars, Trucks, Boats and Equipment, Chuck's Import, Village Bob's Motor Works, Miller's Auto Sales, Samman Auto Sales, JM Auto Sales, Specialty Auto, Main Street Gas and Auto Sales, JJ Auto Sales, Z&amp;J Automotive, and Nathan's Garage. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve all class two motor vehicle licenses.
Just have a question first.
Yep.
Are all the taxes paid?
Yes.
Okay, and did you check also, how about the business certificates?
Yes.
They're all set? I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Class three, we have Westgate Auto, Buck Stevens, Free Town Auto, J&amp;T Auto Salvage, CSA Auto Parts, Hometown Automotive, East Free Town Auto Salvage, Millis Industries, DM Auto Enterprises, so have a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Same question.
Yes.
Yes and yes?
Yes to all licenses.
Okay.
Yeah, you checked with all that before you leave.
I'll second.
Yes, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Then we have motor vehicle graveyard license for Millis.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Auctioneer license renewal for J&amp;T Auto Salvage?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sale of secondhand furniture and merchandise, Winter Hill.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Then we have minutes, October 1, 22, 28, and November 5.
Make a motion to approve October 1, October 28, November 5. I'm holding on October 22 because I was not yet that.
Yeah, understood, and I had just one little thing on the 28. We were just missing a comma between Barbara Place and Brad Paper for the attendees. So you, you're doing 1, 28, and November 5.
Correct.
So I have seconds. Any questions?
For the 28, is it every you said?
Yeah, I told her, the comma.
Comma?
Just a comma, it's just that her name isn't Barbara Place, Brad Paper.
So why don't we hold this for the next meeting and have the comma changed? I second the motion.
I almost like threw up just now.
I know. That's what the plan was.
I second, I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have to do the 22nd, that'd be you and me, and I did not have any questions.
I had no question. I make a motion that we accept these meetings.
And I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, one extension, right? Okay. Now we have the street and sidewalk opening permit in Serpent. Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we allow the installation of this gas line. This house has 67 Dr. Breley rooms.
Second? I'll second, yeah. Have you talked to, Richard, have you talked to Charles, Charles?
No, I have it, N-Star is not our problem. They know what the rules are, they respond appropriately. If they, if we have an issue with them, they come back promptly.
Okay.
This gas line is on the same side of the road as that house.
It is.
Yeah.
So it's not a big deal?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Annual town election to be held on April 1.
Make a motion to approve the annual town election to be held April 1, 2013, with the positions as listed.
Second.
All in favor? Or you want to read them out, go ahead.
Yeah, one selectman, board of health and personnel board member for a three-year term, one assessor three-year term, one regional school district committee, Free Town three-year term, one regional school district committee, Free Town second year unexpired term, one regional school district committee from Lakeville, one cemetery committee member three-year term, two library trustees three-year terms, one water and sewer commissioner three-year term, one planning board member five-year term, three finance committee members three-year terms, and one housing authority member for a three-year term.
Okay. You second that.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, I also like to send, recommend sending a letter to the Free Town-Lakeville School Committee, telling them that our election will be held on Monday, April 1, and asking them to have a half-day of school.
Good, very good. And we've been reading a lot more articles about schools that have been doing that. We were ahead of the game.
Well, you and I were both on the school committee when we did that.
When we did that.
We left, and now they have whatever they have.
No, we do want that half-day on April 1. Okay. Then we have senior work-off program.
Oh wait, you didn't call the motion.
Oh, I didn't. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with what you added, right? Senior work-off, this is, she goes through the same process, we revise the actual vetting process to mirror the HUD, right? I mean, isn't that, isn't that right?
Yes.
Okay, so then these people would all be qualified for that. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
For the applicants listed from item 1 to 21 from Barbara regarding the senior work-off program.
Good. And I had a second, right?
Yes.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
So make sure the departments are aware of this, okay? New IRS mileage, boy, I wish I got that.
You mean the state doesn't match IRS?
No, 45 cents.
That's it?
Yeah. So what is it, 56?
56.5.
56 and a half.
All right. Well, we've been sticking with IRS for quite a while now, I don't see any reason to deviate from that, do you?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the new mileage rate as IRS mileage rate, 56.5 cents per mile.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Then the chief is here, I think, on the fee for new permit. You want to?
I just need you guys to vote to set the fee at $50 for the new mulch, permit that came out in September, and the new hazardous process and processes, which was in effect in January.
Oh, so that's new?
It's new.
Statewide, yeah.
Statewide.
Why? Why should we approve it?
Well, that way it keeps all our permits at the same level.
Yeah.
None of the other permits are going up.
Correct.
You're new permits. Now, you put mulch down in front of your house, does that go?
No, that doesn't apply to residential, that's only commercial.
Well, depends how many mulch you leave it there.
It only goes to affect if you store 300 cubic yards, if you quite get it from here, turtles next door.
They do go up in smoke.
Nothing to do with homeowners or residents.
Because his pile lasted.
Really?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the two new permits that are authorized by the state and set by the fire chief at $50 each, one for mulch and one for flammable storage.
Hazardous, yes.
Hazardous.
I'll second that. One more question. That company that was going to come in, and I still don't know where they are on this radar, would this affect them in any way?
The composting, because they store a lot.
Probably not, because they don't mix chemicals together.
But they're probably going to store, but they'll be storing mulch when they're done.
Oh, as far as mulch, maybe.
Yes.
If they go over 300 cubic yards, they got to get a personal.
Okay, all right.
So in this, I had a question too on that hazardous processing thing. I mean, we've got other, other things that are hazardous in here too. So how is that different?
Because this is where they take two chemicals mixing together.
Oh.
And it's different phases, there's category one through category five. Effective January 1st, anybody goes category five, which is a big, big vessel, the ISP Ashland, they require that permit.
Okay.
Then in June, category four, which next size down, they require that permit.
So, but it would just be the one, they don't have, because there's overlap.
Right, but it's also, but they're also, they're separate for, for storage, drums and that kind of stuff, that triggers another permit.
That's what I was asking.
So we're going to try to consolidate, well, no, we're going to try to consolidate the ones that fall under CMR 33, we want permit, but then the ones that fall under CMR 14 will trigger another permit. I don't make the moves, I just have a question.
I know, okay, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you so much. So now we have the inter-ministerial agreement for, this is before they tape in.
This was a lot more involved than I anticipated.
It was, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, and, I don't know. How much is this new camera and edit equipment going to be doing now?
We haven't finalized that list yet. I talked to their cable chairman last week, and I have absolutely no problems with the recording equipment, that's equipment that we would use anyway it would be stored at our location. I did indicate to him that I had concerns about the edit and conversion equipment, because that is basic desktop computer and software, it would be located in their facility rather than ours. He has it here, it's illustrative, but we are going to have additional conversation about that.
All right, and the other, the other part of that I was not really keen on was the amount of times that we can have something, because now Steve, Steve just came in and said he would like to have those public meetings on cable.
People were limited here.
That won't be a problem, they will.
But if I'm signing my name to this, and it says that it's limited, then it is a problem, sort of, or it could potentially be a problem.
Could be an added cost, and I, you know.
Right.
It'll probably be an added cost at the, at the rate we're paying for, before we come out to a per episode cost. They did it this way because that was the information that they had.
Because we also have some hearings that would be helpful, not just us, but some other hearings that go on in town that would be nice to have.
What were we paying?
Yeah, what were we paying? Do you remember your cable commission rule to pay? I don't remember.
We didn't even have to have a meeting because this was taking place, so I had no way, and I wasn't on the cable commission.
No, that's right. I don't know.
Should we know what the council's paying?
What was that?
What was the, before, before this occurred?
What, to air it on cable?
Yeah.
Yeah, we weren't paying anything, it was just dropped and, yeah.
And they were doing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now we have no facility to do that.
Right.
But we're still charged through our billing for some of this.
Right.
That now we're paying for.
And Lakeville still wants to charge us for, we have to give a donation if we want to use Channel 95, which is.
That's the local.
That's, that's the Free Town-Lakeville, and it's under their purview, so, you know, that's an additional cost on top of this if we want to still be part, and the schools are on that one.
Right, and that, of course.
It's almost like, great.
Yeah.
Women, they're talking about Channel 90, not 95.
Well, what she's saying is that 95, which has all the school stuff on it, is Free Town's under Lakeville's control, and now they're asking us for additional financial support so that we can have access to that information.
Why do we want access to that when we have Channel 90?
Because we don't have any school stuff.
Because we don't have anything from.
From Free Town-Lakeville School.
From the Free Town-Lakeville Department.
Yeah, but can't people just turn to 95?
No, it's going to be shut off.
That's, that's what he, that's what you're saying.
95 is going to be shut off.
Going to lose it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, can we get the programming from, for Free Town for the school system and put it on Channel 9?
Well, that's, that's another part of my question, right?
How much for that?
So say we have the disk and we want to put that on our, on our thing, then how much extra is that going to cost us?
Exactly.
When we're limited to how many, how many viewings we can have per year.
Yeah, we don't seem to have any option, because Laker was going to be substantially higher to do this. They were talking about $50,000 investment.
Right. No, I, I agree with that. No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
I don't think that's the question.
I'm, I'm saying that there's still holes in this that need to be kind of tweaked out a little bit, and.
It'd almost be helpful if there was, you know, this is the minimum, 26 meetings and another two town meetings, the absolute minimum bare bones, what we would want.
They are extremely easy to get along with.
Can they give us a per cost for anything over?
Yeah, I'm sure they will.
All right. Can we hold off on this thing until?
Yeah, there are two things that I, because I'm not satisfied on the equipment.
Okay.
Right.
I do want to have that, but I didn't want you to get this so we could start moving this along.
So, one, yeah, that's perfect. I'm just going to add my comments to it and give it back.
Yeah, and one of the things is that, do we have the ability to get a CD from the regional school system?
They're probably, well, or from whoever the Lakeville Cable Committee is, because they're the ones taking those meetings, so are they going to?
Charge us for it.
They probably will.
And Alex Stylus and I talked a couple of weeks ago after the holidays. He and I are going to be going to the elementary school and to the high school, looking at the facilities, because he knows what was there and what was part of a joint operation, and wants to see what kind of changes have been made, and just to make sure that we're treated appropriately.
Okay, that's good then.
All right, so we're going to hold off on this for now, just to get a little bit more clarification on it, and then the equipment.
This is, this is the first step, so you can say it.
All right. Oh, we have the firefighters, so we have an MOU, right?
Yeah, this is just.
This is, we had to put that extra, we wanted it quantumized, to be added.
It's, it's just, yeah, after we went and we did the firefighters, we wanted to make sure that they were equal to everybody else in town, so this is just what we.
This is going to be added to the contract.
Correct.
That's fine. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the budget stuff, we had some feedback already from Janice, and we had some feedback from you, that the impacts, the cumulative impact for us overall to be in around the $8,000 area, and it was determined, at least with these preliminary discussions, that we could cover that, but it's pretty clear they're coming. And so we had asked that you, Richard, talk to each department to make sure, because 1% on one department means a lot more than 1% on another department, and we want to make sure that there's no hardship on this. So I don't know if you've had that discussion with them?
No, because actually we, Janice identified that we have enough to cover this, but I've also looked at what we had in our original budget, and we had a couple of line items in the budget that are not, in fact, going to be expended. They were put there because they, well, in one case, it was an emergency management grant, we thought there was a 50% match.
Yeah, but there wasn't.
So, no, the, the two grants that I was able to apply for and receive, I was able to match within kind. So in fact, we've actually freed up an equivalent amount to this cut within the budget. I'm not as worried about this cut, because this is absorbable. What I'm more concerned about is what might be the cumulative effect of reductions that are not talent cuts but may devolve back to us, and I'm also concerned that if the negotiations at the federal level are not productive by the end of the month, and if tax collections don't start picking up, that this is just the beginning of things to come.
It could well be.
So what I'm going to be doing is monitoring this. When departments met, you know, we, we did discuss that, that revenues were not going to be good, we were going to be looking at cutbacks, this is something that is obviously not going to be foreign. I, I don't like the idea of percentage reductions because of one or two person office.
Exactly.
You, you give them a 1% reduction, you tell them that they're basically closing, but if we start seeing that we need to cut back, I'm constantly monitoring our expenditure reports and looking for opportunities to delay or to defer expenses.
And we need to keep all department heads alerted to this, and when's the next department head meeting?
We're going to be, I'm going to be scheduling one after the first year.
Okay, because I, I do think you're right, I think we could see a cascading effect with other revenue streams that will impact the town. Any questions? I think we've covered it, at least we're out in front of this. All right. Now, I had, this is the lease agreement, do you guys have any comments?
Before we start, I had a discussion, two, two comments first. This is draft.
Thank you.
Okay, it should say so on it.
This is not intended to be final.
Because I had a bunch of questions on it.
So you mark it up, comment. The second is that Mike informed me that the area shown on the assessor's map showing the school is actually a parcel that includes the garage. So we have to make sure that when we define the property, we define it a little bit more closely, in such a way that we don't lease the garage to the.
School district.
To the school district.
Or if we do, they're going to pay more than a dollar a year. Highway.
Highway.
That would be bad.
Highway property.
All right, so this lease agreement between Free Town and the school district remains in draft, and I had submitted several questions earlier in our first pass, but.
I want to take a closer look at that.
Yeah, I would agree, I think we have to be very careful in this, and we haven't vetted this through council, correct?
This was prepared by.
Right. But I had asked a question to them.
It's the same, it seems to be the same lease agreement that Laker.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gave them the Laker agreement that we got, they removed the comments that were inserted, that were inappropriate.
And that Laker wasn't even in the draft.
Right, and they also went through there to make sure that it was consistent for us.
Okay. All right, so we should all take another really close look at this. Um, status update and possible, okay, Gurnee Road Bridge, um, there had been a request that that, that we dedicate it. We've come to find out that we don't have to go through a state process on this at all, and we make a determination that we would like to do this as a town we can.
I don't know what we're talking about.
We're talking about an inquiry from, um, Paul Lubin, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Paul Lubin.
You told me it was Paul Lubin.
Yeah, okay. I'm pretty sure it was Paul, who was, uh, act, when we got the bridge fixed, was, uh, wondering if we would consider dedicating it to, um.
Don.
Don Gurney, that's right. So it's, it's.
He, he asked, he asked about that?
Yeah, he said, wouldn't it be nice to do that, so we can have a discussion on that? I don't know if you have any preliminary thoughts, but I asked Richard to find out if there's anything special we had to do. For example, the roundabout's a very different thing. That's state, it's a state project and state property, so we have to go through a process on that. Thoughts?
Is, is there anything on that bridge right now? Any?
Not to my knowledge.
I know there's a plaque on there. Can't recall what the plaque says.
Yeah, but it's, um.
It's a historical plaque.
That's right.
Says something about the bridge.
And the only thing that I would say is, to your point right there, is that anything that we did would have to go through this for commission, because they definitely would have been a part of this.
What was the reasoning of calling it the Gurney Road Bridge?
I have no idea.
Obviously, because of the Gurney family. I'm not that stupid.
Gurney Road.
And it's getting Gurney Road, because, you know, it's the Gurney family again.
Well, we had four.
If mine's been a reason why it was called this to begin with, and maybe, maybe instead of just, you know, honing in on one person, maybe we, you know, maybe we do it to the whole Gurney family.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not sliding anybody. I'm.
That's an idea.
But I just want to, I want to make sure that there isn't another reason or if there wasn't another dedication somewhere along the lines. And I think.
Yeah.
The Historical Society would.
I do think so. I think that's the next step. I just wanted to.
Yeah. All right, so I think that we should take this and put this on, um.
Yep, put it on our list.
Business.
Yep.
So we can keep.
So we'll follow up with, um.
Refer to the Social Society.
Yeah, just say that, yeah, and I, and I think your, your idea is something they want, they may want to contemplate as well.
Right.
The Gurney family. All right, and then the Tyler Tryhan roundabout, that was all signed, um, by the governor, and we've already been in touch with people at, um, District Five, and I let, um, Mrs. Tryhan know, because she needs to engage the Navy.
She's already done that.
Yep, and she's, but we're going to try to plan a date. You need to keep this, and, you know, laser focus, because I think there's going to be some logistics to it that it takes some.
Yeah, um, last meeting, we had, um, Dan LeBlanc was here.
Good.
We talked about that a little bit, so.
And we should probably, you know, we, well, we'll let, we just don't want on the side of this, because this is going to take some strategy.
No, but definitely, we.
They were happy with the spring.
We definitely said the spring.
Yep.
Right, Paul?
Yeah, the, in fact, the Navy said the spring.
Right.
Oh, the Navy already said the spring too?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so is there anything to Board of Health? Seems to be blank.
Are you healthy?
I'm very healthy. You're healthy?
You get your flu shot?
I got my flu shot.
All right, so now we.
There should be anything going on.
Personnel.
Okay, I have status changes for the following people. Karen Mellow, Assistant Assessor. Um, Karen Robitaille, Senior Clerk, Board of Assessors.
Sorry, listen, can you say it a little louder? She can't hear you because of the.
That's because of the trimetry party next door.
Then you should be at.
And she's supposed to be at.
Okay, um, change of status forms for Karen Mellow, Assistant Assessor. Karen Robitaille, Senior Clerk for the Board of Assessors. Um, Joseph Corriere for Assistant Board of Health Agent. Mako Adet, Custodial. Ellie Gold, Senior Clerk, Building and House. Rosemary Haley, Senior Clerk, COA. Judy Reese, Van Driver. Vincent D. Olivera, Van Driver. Victoria King, Transfer Station Attendant. Dana Basette, Assistant Transfer Station Attendant. Forget that other guy. You want me to keep going? This is for the town hall.
I'll make a motion, a motion that we approve these changes of status.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, change of status forms for Fire Chief.
No, I don't know. No, I'm thinking maybe not.
Full-time deputy. A full-time Deputy Fire Chief, Cliff Hardin. Deborah Hallard, Senior Clerk. Wesley Vaughn, Full-Time Lieutenant Paramedic. Harry Ashley, Full-Time Lieutenant Paramedic. Neil Acor, Full-Time Lieutenant Paramedic. Paul S. Ashley, Full-Time Firefighter EMT One. Keith Mello, Full-Time Firefighter Paramedic. Mark Rogan, Full-Time Firefighter Paramedic. Nicholas Lakai, Full-Time Firefighter Paramedic. And our newcomer, Jeffrey J. Brum, Full-Time Fire, Fire Paramedic.
I make a motion to approve those, all but the first one.
Except the first one, yeah.
Sorry, Eric. Merry Christmas to you.
You're here. So you make a motion to approve.
Most of them won't, but.
And I'll say.
These are all contractual, uh.
Yep. That's right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a change of status form for Craig Perrow.
How can we be colorful on?
Because Calvin has three, three pommes instead of gold.
Oh, we all have.
We all have a different color.
You notice who got the gold?
That means nothing.
Yeah, but you know what?
That's actually sunflower.
That's why.
Sunflower.
Golden age.
Goldenrod.
Yep, golden age.
Do you have a, a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a letter here from the Library Trustees that, um, that they sent from Cheryl M. Bellevue, Library Technician, indicating her intent to retire on June thirtieth, 2013. Cheryl has worked in the town's library since nineteen eighty-nine and is the epitome of a dedicated employee. She is well-known and well-liked by many library patrons. Her knowledge, skills, and ability will be difficult to match and impossible to replace. A copy of Cheryl's retirement letter is included here with. The Library Trustees and I felt that it's important to hire a new library technician in advance of Cheryl's retirement date, so this person will have time to be trained and to become accustomed to the town's libraries. We would like to have the position advertised in January or early February and possibly have the new employee start no later than the end of March, 2012. The impact on the library budget should be minimal and easy to absorb without the need for additional funding. Want me to read the rest?
No, we accept her.
Yeah, fine.
We can, she's going to retire. We accept her letter of.
Yeah, you need to, you need to accept it.
Accept her letter of, uh, retirement. Uh, I do want to, I make the motion to accept her letter of retirement. I do want to say I'm going to miss Cheryl. I go into the library quite often. She always picks on me about carrying my wife's bag full of books because it looks like a pocketbook. She only lets me take one candy from the jar, and, uh.
That's the stout speaker.
And she, and she's, she's trying to, she's trying to, she's trying to keep me in shape, but we are going to miss Cheryl.
Yeah.
Very good employee.
She's an awesome, awesome employee and always has a smile on her face.
Yes, she does.
So we'll accept with regret. Send her a letter of appreciation.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, um, they should probably go ahead and, and, um, see if they can have, if their budget can sustain the overhaul.
Yeah, I think.
I think it makes sense.
I think they'll be fine.
Usually if you can shorten the learning curve, you end up coming out ahead. I would like to say, though, that, um, we have also, these weren't in our packets, but they were in here. This is the Highway Department's. Somebody was a little tardy in delivering that. Could be that guy over there.
You're lucky it's the season to be merry.
That would be the guy. Not you, Chief.
No, you're off the hook this time.
Get a, get a picture of the guy over there in the car. He's the guy that forgot to bring him in.
Um, change of status forms for Michael McHugh and.
No.
Walsh. Um, Michael McHugh, Senior Clerk. Edward Walsh, Truck Driver, Laborer. John Manato, Junior Foreman. Jeremy Manato, Truck Driver, Laborer. Williams and Junior McQuinn. And Andrew Jason is Equipment Operator. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Only because we're feeling generous with tardy people. Okay, so that's all you have?
No, I know.
No, you don't.
Um, I also have another letter.
Yes.
Um, and it's, um, to you, but, um.
Please read it.
Okay, I regret to inform you that I am resigning from my position as Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectment effective January sixteenth, 2013. I want to thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to work for you, to work with you and for you over the last four years. I have enjoyed working with everyone and appreciate the opportunities I have been given here during my employment. I wish you all the best. Sincerely, Elsie Sores.
Yep, so, um, we, we.
Well, that's a real kick in the pants during the holiday season.
Yeah, that was not a very nice thing. It was very sad for us, um, that you've been great, Elsie, and we're not going to decline your letter, but we're doing it with an enormous amount of regret, because you have absolutely been the face of this board for the public, and you've been professional, and you've been welcoming, and you've been knowledgeable, and that those are really wonderful traits that are not necessarily easy to come upon. So thank you, and I will make the motion to accept the letter with extreme regret.
I'll second, I'll second the motion, and I, I do want to thank Elsie for all the work she's done for me the last couple of years that I've been on the board, and I wish her well in her new endeavors.
Thank you. Er. All I have to say to you is, er. No, um, I had the pleasure of interviewing her and, and as well as Jean, and she's done a phenomenal job. The, the office runs without a hitch. It's organized. I can find anything I need when you're not there. And, um, no, you, you're the right hand to everybody here at this table, and, uh, I just want to thank you as well. Um, all right, all those in favor?
I'd like to bring up something. Uh, we have, uh, a few employees that work under the personal bylaw.
Yes.
That we haven't dealt with as far as increases. Um, the four unions represent, I would say ninety-five percent of our employees, and, uh, and these people are just, uh, they have low representation, and I think that maybe at some point we ought to consider at least applying similar increase to those people. Now, I'm referring to, uh, like the town clerk. If I miss anybody, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Town clerk, uh, is one. Um, building inspector is another one. Who else? The senior, uh, the Council on Agent Director is another one. There's somebody else too. Who?
Yeah, the library.
Oh, the library, that's right, the library. I think there's four people. There may be a fifth one, but I, I think we really should consider, uh, applying that increase to, uh, to these people, because they're sitting right now with nothing.
Well, I'm not going to.
We can have a discussion.
We can have a discussion about it, but.
You're not supposed to tie the.
But again, we're not supposed to tie union contracts to non-union employees. Now, there is a way, and we've done that.
Sure.
I mean, we gave the town clerk an increase, um, last year or the year before, um, so we have, we have, but, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but we can't necessarily do it in the same way, manner, or fashion that ties one contract to a non-union personnel.
Well, 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 that's, I wasn't trying to tie anybody's contract at all.
That's not what you're doing.
We have a personnel, uh, schedule. I'm just saying, apply a cost of living increase similar to the same rate that we applied to the, uh, under the union contract, because all union personnel have got the same rates.
Yeah, but.
It's not tying, uh, a contract, for example, police and fire chiefs, their contracts are tied, their rate of pay is tied to the union contract. I'm just saying, apply a cost of living increase to these people that don't have any representation. That's, that's what I'm, I'm talking about.
We should be doing something, but we, we have had council opine on that, and so the way we do that really has to be separate and distinct from what was accomplished at the bargaining level.
So are you going to negotiate with issuing the video request?
Well, I think that we should first sit down and look at what we're talking about.
And when was the last?
And when was the last act of any?
When was the last time?
Taken, yeah. Seems like it's been a while. Well, Jackie was fairly recent, but still.
Chuck.
Yep.
Is one, um, you know.
That's right.
So we have.
That's right.
Yeah, we're going to do some homework on this. I don't think we, there's any question, but we should be looking at this.
I just don't want, I don't want these people forgotten.
No, agreed. No, so that's on your to-do list. We need to take out and find out when they were last, as a salary action, last taken, what it was, and then if you could, I think some comparisons of similar communities would be helpful, and we can start the discussion there.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm just talking about it. I'm not talking about anything elaborate. I'm talking about the cost of living adjustment.
I hear you. I think if you're going to look at anything.
Not a mass, not a massive change in your salary.
No, we can't do that. But we have to, we also have to have some, some idea, concept.
Right.
So that's all I'm asking for. All right, um, okay, new business. The one thing that we did, I have, we have to get going on is a master plan, and that's something that really shouldn't go here. It may have to go to town meeting, but we don't have a master plan, and that's also creating or reducing opportunities we might have for some grant work. And it's also how you plan, like the, the PDA, PPA thing is a good planning strategy, but you, you, with a master plan in place, that would be part of your master plan, as would any kind of additional planning you might want to do throughout the community. Unfortunately, to my knowledge, communities that have undertaken a master plan exercise have had to use consultants to do it. It's focus group discussions, uh, and then actually generating a document. I don't know where the rest of you feel we should go on this, but I think the first thing to do, from my perspective, is to see if we can at least start a couple of focus group discussions to talk about what people, or actually configure a committee, that would be a master plan committee, made up of probably planning, conservation, anybody that's on the Economic Development TIP group, uh, to start the discussion on how we can engage in a master plan exercise.
A master plan.
Right.
For what?
For the community. It encompasses everything from your infrastructure needs, your development plans. Again, we're partly down the road with the PDA, PPA thing, how, what you perceive as, um, future development potential, economic development potential, and how that's going to be achieved. It's also about cultural resources and heritage. All of that, then you can cite chapter and verse of your master plan when you're applying for grant funding to support anything. So if we did go for Mass Works funding, for example, we could cite that in Chapter Three of the master plan, we identified the lack of, um, potable water and the need for water lines as being key to our economic development in this particular section, things like that. It's just that we're, we're really far behind on this. We caught up on some other things. I would like to at least initiate this discussion. Um, I think we have the time now to start seeing if people have some ideas. On the other hand, maybe prove to wait a little bit, see where we go with the planning board, um, and that setup, because planning obviously is really going to be spearheading this, not us.
You know, one of the things I think would be beneficial to us is maybe, uh, contact surrounding towns in this area and get a copy of their master plan.
Absolutely. Rochester has one. I think Lakeville has one. I read New Bathory.
Rochester's way ahead of the crew.
Yeah, they are, and they're about, what, five, six thousand people?
We hope them all the time. I mean, that's great.
It is, it's terrific.
I just, I feel like we have a lot of the components already in place.
We do.
We have the South Main Street corridor plan.
The overlay district, yes.
We have zoning in place, you know, but I wanna make sure that if we have a committee and we put a committee together, that we're gonna get something accomplished, because we were once talking about the Economic Development Committee, but we haven't gone anywhere with that. You know what I mean?
Fifty people, right.
We got so many committees on the books.
And I just, I feel like we have all the components.
I think we do.
I just wanna make sure that, that we have everything, that we have an outcome.
Maybe this is how we bring it together, yeah.
And maybe, you know, when we start with the South Coast, you know, having this, right, maybe that's where we start to break off. But I will say that, you know, we have a charge of money that, that we've been really prudent about.
Yes.
And if economic development is our goal, then we should really sit down and start to look at our infrastructure and come up with the needs that we need to have businesses come in, because had we have had the infrastructure in place, we wouldn't have lost Boston Beer.
Boston Beer, that's right.
We probably wouldn't have lost some other development opportunities in that area.
Or we would've attracted others.
I know that, that Campanelli wants business to go in there. They have no sewer up that roadway. I know that the businesses on South Main Street wanna thrive and they wanna grow, but their system will not allow them to do so. So, I think that we have an obligation to start to look at what the cost would be to run that line from Fall River all the way down to where we need it to go, because, you know what? There's nobody from the state that's gonna help us, there's nobody from the federal government that's gonna come down and give us a business. We had a look at those businesses for ourselves, and we have to come up with our own, like, little plan of how we're gonna attack that. Do we have a tri-fold that says, "Come to Free Town"? Do we do YouTube videos and say, "Look what our town can do for you"? But we have nothing in place. We keep saying that we wanna do more, and now we have a little bit of money set aside that we can start to look at those opportunities.
We do, and you might...
What money are you talking about?
In free cash and stabilization, because before we start going out and spending everything that we have, I think that we, this board, needs to come up with, where do we wanna spend our money? What is our goal for this town? Like, it's great that we're gonna have a master plan or an Economic Development Committee in the South Main Street corridor, but what is the vision and goal of this board, and where are we going?
Well, that's what a master plan would help define, but you're absolutely right. We have all these components, and we can't go out and just spend money willy-nilly. I think really, and to your point, we should have the discussion with Serpeth first, and this may be a great segue for them, figure out what would be the components and what would they propose, because we do have a lot of the pieces, and we should probably come up with a strategy that melds all these things together so that we can encourage economic development. They're not gonna...
What happened to Boston Beer? My understanding, Boston Beer didn't come here because they found a plant that was all set.
Well, it was taking so long for us to get the grants.
It was taking too long, because we had to look for grants in order to get a sewer in here, because they needed, they needed sewer and water.
Right.
And we had to go and try to get all these grants to try to come up with the money, because Free Town didn't have the money to put that sewer system in.
And then they ended up, because it was taking so long, that they landed in Pennsylvania with a building that was all set to go.
All set to go, that's why.
But that wasn't, they were committed to Free Town very, very much, but it took forever. The P-Wed and, I can't remember, two grants, we were working on those grants. That would've built the infrastructure, but they couldn't wait any longer. They're expansion, they're growth goals.
They wanted to build a brand-new facility.
They did.
Right, but we haven't, those grants have never come through.
Well, now they're Mass Works grants, so again, you have to have your plan.
That's what I'm saying. You can't wait for the state and the federal government to help us out.
No.
You can say that, that we're gonna get all these kinds of grants, but, you know, we, we don't, we, we don't, and I think that we have to, and maybe, maybe it's gonna be too costly for us. I, I don't know, is it a $5 billion project? Is it a $2 million project? Do we do a debt exclusion for it? Do we have enough to pay it down as we go? Those are all things that we have to start to, well, first thing we have to do is find out, how much is it gonna cost and how, how big of a project we're doing?
You should know that, and you have to at least get to 25% design, but that's exactly what Mass Works money's for. It's what used to be the P-War. It's now Mass Works, and it's all about infrastructure, but it is part of your planning strategy, and you're absolutely right. Without that infrastructure in place, we're not as attractive a destination as we could be. Nothing that we'd like, that we'd consider.
Fall River has, they're right over the border, they're, they're right there, they have sewer and water.
Yep.
Perfect. And we're right next door, and we have...
But we have a little, but we should do an analysis of that.